We wish to thank Boston Spa Mayor Larry Woolbright for his assistance in organizing this event. My name is Kathy Cogbrich. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Saratoga County. I live in Malta, and I will be your moderator tonight. Before we start, I want to warn the candidates and our audience that video taken tonight is the property of the League and can only be used by the League or licensed media according to FCC regulations. This event will be posted in its entirety. It may not be used by the candidates except to post a link to the complete video. We do not make this request lightly. We have had recent experiences where candidates or their supporters have used portions of our video or an audience member's own video against their opponents. The League is a nonpartisan organization, and use of the video by a campaign specifically against another candidate goes against our purpose. Additionally, this behavior would discredit us with candidates, making it difficult for us to sponsor future forums. All candidates participating this evening have pledged that they will abide by our policy, and we trust that all of you who are watching will abide by the policy also. The League of Women Voters of Saratoga County is a nonpartisan volunteer political organization dedicated to the informed and responsible participation of citizens in government. The League never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. That has been the League's policy since 1920. Membership is open to anyone who is eligible to register and vote, whether male or female. Please consider joining your local League. Your constituents sent us questions in advance. League members reviewed and compiled them to be representative and to avoid redundancy. We reject questions of a personal nature. Candidates, this is your opportunity to let voters know your stance on these topics and how you will address the issues facing the village of Boston Spa. Please don't waste valuable time tearing down or labeling your opponent. Deal with the facts in your closing statements. Absolutely no zingers. In other words, no putting your opponent on the spot with no chance to reply. We're a friendly village. Boston Spa is a friendly village, and we want to keep it that way. We have timers for this evening's event. Cards will be held up for the candidates to glance at. Green means one minute left. Yellow means 30 seconds left, and red means time's up. There are five candidates for two trustee positions. The election is nonpartisan. The five candidates in alphabetical order are Ben Baskin, Robert Bush Jr., Sean Mulvaney, Mary Price Bush, and Sean Raymond. Now it is time to hear their two-minute opening statements. They have drawn lots to determine the order. And the first to speak is Mary Price Bush.
Okay. I'm very nervous, so bear with me, and I'm gonna read my statement.
Okay. We'll let you start now.
Okay. Did you have something else to say?
No, we'll start your timer now.
Okay. My name is Mary Price Bush, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the citizens who submitted questions for this forum tonight. I've lived in Boston Spa for 30 years, and I raised my children Colin and Elise as a single parent in the village, and I can't think of a better community for them to have grown up in. My goal as trustee is to continue to have the Boston Spa be be the place that families can raise their children and share the opportunities that my children had. Places like the skating rink, the public library, and events such as the holiday party, the Halloween party, and Family Fun Day. We have services such as the dedicated fire departments, an excellent ambulance service, our police department, and a hard-working DPW that keeps our waters and sewers running. Mayor Woolbright's vision of a nonpartisan election has been a game changer in my mind and an opportunity for us to forget political parties and focus on the village. My only objective is to represent all of the citizens of the village and to be their voice on the Board of Trustees and to help put those ideas in motion. I want input from our neighbors, our residents, about what is important to them and their families and what their concerns and suggestions are for our community. There's been a lot of special interest motives lately, and the board has struggled the past few years. We need to represent all of the village, not our wants and likes. The village has gone through some tough financial times, and will go through many more. We need to act on needs, not wants, and prioritize our spending. I'm not a politician. You can tell that. I'm a hard-working member of the Village of Boston Spa with a knack for budgeting and problem-solving. There's a reason residential properties don't stay on the market for very long. It's because families want to be part of our community, and I want to make sure that that continues.
Okay, thank you very much, Mary Price Bush. Now it's time to hear from Sean Mulvaney.
All right. So I like to start off saying good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off saying thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. You guys do tremendous work. Also, very importantly, I'd like to thank my wife and my son Brendan. Without them, they're my rock. We're here to share our thoughts about how we would make a good trustee. My name is Sean Mulvaney, and I'm running for Boston Spa Village trustee. For this nonpartisan election, I'm running under a party named Boston Spa Vision. Born and raised in the beautiful village, I only want to see the village succeed and thrive. I strongly believe that the residents in the village deserve a lot more. But learning the political game, it has been far, far been a ride, and I am still learning. Everything we do in life, you're always gonna learn. It's a huge learning curve for me. I believe in always giving 110% in everything you do and being true to others. I strongly believe I can provide hard work and dedication to the village. I believe people want to see someone with passion and drive for I'm sorry, and drive both of them. I both have. By giving DPW proper manpower, this would help taxpayers of Boston Spa with snow removal and leaf pickup. Fixing what we have first is key. There is so much more that we could be given to the community of Boston Spa. There is so much potential in Kelly Park. With the right plan and and leadership, we could possibly offer summer camps, free dung fields, and more. Giving more options for youth programs will bring revenue to the Village of Boston Spa. A way to make money by also bringing people into the village. Working together in community are very important to me. Boston Spa is a very large, amazing community, but it I gotta stop.
Okay. All right. You'll get your closing statement. Thank you, Sean Mulvaney.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna hear from Sean Raymond.
Hello, everyone. Sean Raymond here. I want to start out with thanking the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to present my ideas in this forum. And I just want to let everyone know that 22 years ago, I moved to Boston Spa. The charm of the village atmosphere made Boston Spa the natural choice to put down roots. The village has given so much to me. At a point, I decided to give something back, and I began volunteering for the task force on the Board of Ed to determine the Malta Avenue Elementary School should be closed, which ultimately ended in renovating and expanding Malta Ave and later the design of Gordon Creek. I then became a board member of the organization responsible for building an all-inclusive playground in Kelly Park. With friends and neighbors and some of my engineering expertise, we were able to construct the playground in four months. I then ran for village trustee and won. Fast forward four years later, along with a new mayor, new fellow trustees, and new staffing, the village finances are in better shape than they've been in recent history. Along with the village staff and my colleagues on the board, we've been able to close out budget years left incomplete by previous administration. Go from habitually operating at a deficit to having a fund balance around $1 million. Secure grants for street scape and sidewalks. Seek grant opportunities to address the village's aging infrastructure. I believe in some part I can contribute this to my experiences 20-year civil engineering career in both the private and public sector. I feel that experience and expertise uniquely qualified me to be a trustee four years ago, and now with my experience as your current trustee, even more so.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean Raymond. Next, we're gonna hear from Benjamin Baskin. Oh, you have to unmute yourself.
Yep. All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Ben Baskin, and I also want to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd be honored to be elected village trustee on March 16th. I love this village. It's given our family a lot, and I believe in doing my part to keep the community growing and healthy. I've lived here with my wife and two sons for the past 17 years. I'm a nonprofit and public health professional, a grant writer, and a community planner. I believe I have the skills and the values to help ensure that the village government works effectively on your behalf. My skills include financial management. I was the executive director of the Stillwater Area Community Center, and when I got there, there was a $50,000 deficit, and now, two years later, not now, but two years later, we had a fund balance of $100,000. So I know how to balance budgets, and I know how to implement financial controls. I'm also a grant writer. When I was president and treasurer of the Board of the Boston Area Community Center, I raised about $100,000 in grants to build the center's first playground and then organized a community bill, another $30,000 or so in value. I've also done a lot of community planning. I put together a plan called the 2020 Plan on Aging, which won a national award from the Administration on Aging. And, excuse me, it's the idea was to how to design a community that is good for all ages. I'm also on the Boston Planning Board. Now, we have a comprehensive plan and zoning coming up, and I think I can really contribute a lot to that effort. I've done a lot of volunteer work, I believe strongly in volunteering. I volunteered with the BACC, the Community Center, the Boston Spa Education Foundation, Bark, Friends of the Kateros, the Animal Shelter, and I play saxophone in Boston Community Band. I'm also currently, as I said, on the Boston Planning Board and the Boston Clean Energy Committee. My experiences reflect the values that I hold. Am I over time? I have time? Okay. My experiences reflect the values that I hold. I believe in open and responsive government. I believe in efficient use of tax dollars and accountability for every dollar spent. I believe in smart growth to preserve village character and local businesses. Thank you.
Time's up. Okay, thank you, Ben Baskin. Okay, Robert Bush Jr., it's your turn. Be sure to unmute yourself.
I apologize. I have an emergency I have to go attend to. Fire whistle went off. I have an emergency I have to go attend to.
Okay.
So I apologize. I gotta go.
All right. Okay. I'm not sure. Okay. All right, thank you. Oh, man. Now I'm gonna have to Oh, he's gonna be back in a second? Okay.
I'll be back in a minute.
Um.
You want to circle back?
Um, well, I was just thinking, maybe, can you pause it, Barb? Can you stop recording for a minute? Well, I'm gonna have to run off. Yes, what is it?
You're recording.
Is it your recording? Go ahead.
Okay, um, hi, everybody. Welcome back.
Wait a minute. Yes, it is. Sorry.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back. One of our candidates is a volunteer fireman, and he was called away on a call. And so we're gonna have to go on without him. If he's able to make it back, we'll let him do his opening statement and catch up with the questions wherever we're at. But for the time being, we're done with closing statements now, and it's time for the questions from the audience or from the citizens. Candidates will have up to one and a half minutes to respond to questions. You are not required to respond. You may pass if you wish. You have two opportunities during the question and answer session to request an additional one minute to add to your response or to respond to something another candidate has said. Just hold up your hand and say red card, and I will acknowledge your request. Red cards may not be used in your opening and closing statement. The timer and I will keep track of the number of red cards used. Questions will be directed to candidates in rotation so that everyone gets a chance to go first. So the first question is going to go to Mary Price Bush, and okay, there they are. What are your priorities for the village tax dollar expenditures over the next five years, and which is most important to you?
Um. Good question. Tax dollars, I would say we need to make sure that our emergency services are well taken care of. The DPW, who is being called out at all times of the day and night, as well as our fire department. We need to make sure that money is set in the budget so we can continue to maintain and support the equipment. Of course, supporting our ambulance service and fire department, or I'm sorry, police department. And I feel that probably priority I can I'd have to, I cannot say which one is priority. They're all priority to me. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'll go ahead. Thank you very much. And Sean Mulvaney, how about you? What are your priorities for the village tax dollars expenditures, and which is most important to you?
Well, what's really important to me is, you know, I've asked a lot of people. They really want their services. I know that the village had a couple people leave. They definitely need manpower. There's a lot of potential in Kelly Park, maybe bringing back a lot of youth programs. Maybe, you know, getting a new leak machine to help them out. They're borrowing one from Scotia. They definitely need the equipment to get the job done, so it's very important. A lot of taxpayers, they care about their streets being cloud and their leaf pickup. And we really need to focus on giving them what they want. I know, I know, it all depends on money and what we have, but that's what's great about being a trustee with other people, is that we can work together and possibly get that done. So that's key. It's just making sure the taxpayers are satisfied.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean Mulvaney.
Thank you.
Sean Raymond, it's your turn.
Uh, just, could you repeat the question so it's fair?
You can always ask for me to repeat the question. What are your priorities for the village tax dollar expenditures over the next five years, and which is most important to you?
Well, I agree with Mary. Like, all the services are very important, and I think that if you had to pick one out, obviously DPW is very important. You know, when somebody turns on their faucet, they want water to come out. And when they flush their toilet, they want it to flush. And, you know, having good infrastructure, water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure is vitally important. And we're currently DPW. We're very lucky to have very skilled staff who can handle our water department, as well as do snow removal, as well as do infrastructure repairs. Now granted, the biggest thing that they face is staffing. You know, equipment can't get used if there's not staff there to use it. And that's one of the critical issues, and particularly with the fact that we have a lot of folks who are close to retirement, who have very specific knowledge about our systems. And I hope that we can hire staff, and we actually plan to in the upcoming year, so they can learn that skill set. And there's an overlap between when people retire and hiring full-staffed people so that they can be trained.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean Raymond. It's your turn, Benjamin Baskin.
Thanks. So a lot of people might not know that we get about $1 million of revenue from our water and sewer system, and much of that is from people outside the village. So in addition to being it, to it being this essential resource that, of course, we all need water, it's actually really important for the village budget. And if we can make that system more efficient with, you know, replacing the water meters so that it's easier to report and there's no missing bills, that would really, you know, anything else we can do to either save expenses with the water or increase revenue would really help the village. And I think there's one thing I want to emphasize. It doesn't all have to be through tax dollars. So in addition to water revenue being an important source, grant dollars can also be used and have been used to develop plans to look at how to repair infrastructure, and often you have to do the smaller planning grants before you can do the really big grants, and so I can help with those planning grants. The village buildings also are in disrepair and really need to be fixed up, and that too, there's some grant money available for that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This next question is going to go to Sean Mulvaney first. Um. How will you improve what one sees as you drive through the village? What are your plans for addressing neglected or abandoned properties, and what can be done to screen or relocate unsightly commercial dumpsters?
Um. Well, we got a code enforcement. We got to make sure that we are regulating that on a daily basis. You know, I don't I don't have much answers on that because, you know, the thing is, we're, if I get in or whoever gets in, we're all working together as a team. There's five votes. You know, and like I said, I'm always learning, and I will do my very best to do my best for the Village of Boston Spa. And that's all I can say. Thanks.
Okay. Sean Raymond?
Uh, yeah, well, that's a good question, and it's something that the board currently has pondered for quite a, you know, long time. And that's why we recently created a comprehensive planning board and are heading to update our comprehensive plan, which is some 20 to 25 years old. And we selected a diverse group of community residents to the board, to that board, so that we can create a comprehensive plan to find out what do we want to do with the streetscape in Boston Spa. What would we like to see? And we want as much citizen input as we can get. So I think it's a 10 or 12-person committee. We have also, you know, and that will spur zoning changes, which to answer the second part of the question, the zoning changes would be, impact location of dumpsters for commercial properties. All those types of regulations are basically born out of reexamining your zoning.
Benjamin, that's your turn.
So there's a couple pieces of that question. One thing that can definitely help with vacant buildings is to develop a vacant building code. You know, as part of this comprehensive plan and zoning updates, you can encourage owners of these buildings to renovate them either through fines or other kinds of incentives that you can offer them. And right now, there's really no enforcement mechanism for a property owner that abandons his or her property. So good zoning will definitely help. There's also a New York State Brownfield Opportunity Area Program to help with some of these, like Angelica Rickets. And it is true also that the zoning can help with the dumpster issue and any other piece in terms of where infrastructure is located and whether it's garbage or other facilities.
Okay, thank you very much, Benjamin Baskin. Um, before Mary Price answers that question, can I ask the moderator to mute Robert Bush Jr.'s room, because I think we're still picking up some of the emergency calls from his police scanner? Okay, Mary Price Bush, do you want me to repeat the question, or are you okay?
No, you can repeat it, please.
Okay. How will you improve what one sees as you drive through the village? What are your plans for addressing neglected or abandoned properties, and what can be done to screen or relocate unsightly commercial dumpsters?
Well, I think the other candidates have addressed it very well. The zoning, that definitely needs to be looked at and updated. I know that they've talked about rezoning. And that's in the process. The Saratoga County Prosperity Partnership has had some good ideas. I don't know how long that's gonna take for things to start rolling. I know that's a long-term goal for the village. But I think with the board members working together with the zoning board and the developers who want to come into the village and the way that the zones are right now, they're hesitant. We need to work on it to bring them and their homes into the village.
Okay, thank you very much. This next question, Sean Raymond, you're gonna get to go first. What specific infrastructure projects are priorities for you? Do they include repairs and/or upgrades to the sewer system in the village? Please also explain how you plan to pay for those projects.
Uh, that is a great question, and it isn't an easy one to answer either. There's a lot of steps to that process, and the water and sewer infrastructure are definitely in need of repair, particularly the sewer infrastructure, because it's there's many parts of that that are pushing the centennial mark and you know, need to be rehabilitated or replaced entirely. The first step to doing anything about that is to do an inventory of your instrict existing infrastructure. So you have to find out what, where is it bad and where is it good? And how soon it has to be replaced. So that is the first step, and then, you know, you have to, you know, hire a firm to do that. And usually an engineering firm. And we're in the process of moving forward with that currently. But the big thing is, is once you have the inventory, now, when the opportunity for grants do come up, you have that inventory because it's required. You'll never get awarded a grant unless you have a comprehensive inventory of your infrastructure. So that's one of the things that, you know, is very critical to doing that, because frankly, we can't just find the money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Price Bush, your turn.
Is it Mr. Baskin's turn?
It is Mr. Baskin's turn. I checked him off, and he hadn't even spoken, so sorry about that. See?
All right, infrastructure. I mentioned this earlier, I think, about how important the water and sewer system is, again, just for daily life, but also for the income of the village. About $1 million a year, our budget is about $5 million a year, so $1 million of that is a big chunk. There's different ways to pay for things. There's really four ways. You can raise taxes. You can take a loan. Of course, no one wants to raise taxes. We already have a lot of loans, so we don't want to take another loan. You can reallocate from one department to another, but then, again, you're gonna hurt the department doing that. And then you can, the other way is you can obtain grants. And luckily, I'm a grant writer, so I could really help with that. You know, it's made a big difference. A lot of planning grants Liz Cormos has written, and that is gonna set the stage for much bigger grants, so again, I'd like to really see the village buildings as well be renovated because they're way overdue. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Benjamin. Mary Price Bush, now it's your turn.
Thank you. The talk of the infrastructure deteriorating and studies needing to be done has been going on for many years. I know it's very in-depth. There's a lot that needs to be done. I know people keep saying, "Grants, we can get a grant," which is great. I know people keep saying grants, we can get a grant, which is great. A lot of times, an equal amount of money has to be put forth from the taxpayers' dollars for the grants. I, I believe that the village is going to have to come up with money for these grants. There are federal funds. There's a Budget for Infrastructure Improvement Fund that I think the village can look into. There's ways hopefully that money can be put aside, the increase in the water rate, maybe that can be put aside, that revenue into the fund. To rehabilitate. Or replace our infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Sean Mulvaney, it's your turn.
Yeah, I think everyone kind of hit it right on the button. You know, nothing's, anything is possible. Nothing's a. Nothing's not doable, but it all like, you know, grants are fine and all, but some way we've got to pay them back. It's, it's all about finding where we. Finding the money to do it and it all comes down to that. I mean, the first step is building BPW's garage to be able to replace all this stuff. I mean, the garage is falling apart. I, I, but you know, I strongly believe that we have to sit down and come up with a way of doing it. And there has to be a way, whether it's going to work or not, we will find out.
Okay, thank you very much. Robert Bush Jr., welcome back. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and let you do your opening statement now. And then we're going to continue on with the questions. You've missed some, but we'll just pick up with question number four. Okay?
Sounds good to me.
All right, so go ahead and do your opening statement.
First, I want to say I apologize everyone here. I, there was a fire call. It was, came across as a structure fire. And we all know how that works with structure fires. More hands are better than fewer. Good evening, everyone, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. I am Robert Bush Jr. Lifelong resident and nonpartisan candidate for trustee. As a volunteer firefighter, I am committed to helping my hometown such as tonight. And look forward to talking about the issues we face in this election. I believe that the village government needs less talk and more action. In the support of our mayor and that's on the Board of Trustees. My goal is to bring that type of spirit. When I'm elected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we're going to go ahead and continue on with our questions. You're going to get a minute and a half, Robert, to answer. If you want to use a red card, just raise your hand and you can use a red card. This time, Benjamin Baskin, you're going to get to go first. The question is. How do you plan to govern in a transparent and unbiased manner? Some of you have close ties with village departments. How would you ensure that you avoid any conflict of interest when the mayor and trustees must consider potentially sensitive or and or controversial issues involving these departments? Such as personnel, budget, accusations of discrimination or harassment? It's your turn.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Yep.
Um, I, I really don't have any conflicts of interest, period. And I want, and I want to keep it that way for all trustees. When auditors look at your fiscal controls, they want to see one person collecting the money, other people counting the money and keeping the books and someone else. Bringing it to the bank and you really need separation of fun, of functions. You know, we need firefighters. Firefighters are awesome. Where would we be without them? But elected officials overseeing the fire department, they should be from outside the fire department. And in fact, the state has ruled that the volunteer fighter fires have to accuse themselves, even if they leave the fire department. And unfortunately, I think the same is true for Mary Price Bush. As the, as the wife of the police chief. You would have to accuse yourself from anything having to do with the, the police. And those are two huge departments. And you know, there's only, there's only five people on the board and if you have to take one or two or three off. Then you're really stuck. You can't do your work. So I think it's really an important piece that we, we don't have part-time village trustees. We really need fully functioning board members, not part timers and, and we just need a, a, a board that works for everyone. And so I think it's better to have people have the skills and experience who are independent of the departments they have to oversee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Robert Bush Jr., it's your turn. If you'd like me to, I can repeat the question.
Yes, could you repeat the question? I believe Sean is in too.
You want to use a red card?
Yeah, am I allowed to rebuttal on that on the red card?
Um, we usually wait until the end of the questioning period or you can rebut at the end when you, when it's your turn to speak, use your red card. And you can add on to that. Okay?
No problem.
All right, Robert Bush Jr. How do you plan to govern in a transparent and unbiased manner? Some of you have close ties with village departments. How would you ensure that you avoid any conflict of interest when the mayor and trustees must consider potentially sensitive and or controversial issues involving these departments? Such as personnel, budget, accusations of discrimination or harassment, which is in the news right now?
I would accuse myself from any kind of talks or anything like that because it's really for, that includes the fire department. Anything else I'm not biased, I'm not part of the other departments or the village. I'm not part of the town board planning me or none of that stuff. It has to do with the fire department. I'd excuse myself and usually. There would probably be a committee or some sort or some sort of way, some sort of. Some form, some form of action being taken, not just by one trustee, not just by two trustees. But you got 300 people that are on the board as well. The votes go for majority. They don't go for all five. And when you have a situation where it involves a fire department, I don't have a say in it. I take myself out of it, whether I'm part of the board or not part of the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary Price Bush, it's your turn to answer that question.
Well, I think if we go by Mr. Baskin's suggestion, I am not eligible as a trustee because I'm married to the police chief. Or that Sean Mulvaney or Bob Bush are not qualified as trustees because they belong to the fire department and we all would have to recuse ourselves. I don't agree with that. I do agree with we recuse ourselves from whatever department we are. Tied to by marriage or by profession, volunteerism. But I would be willing and I planned on being, being separate from the police department and accusing myself. This is a small village. It's very difficult for us not to interact with each other, not know someone, not have ties with. The Board of Elections or the Ethics Board or whoever we deal with. We should have integrity. We should have honesty. We have transparency. We shouldn't be, you know. Spending private emails when it's only to do with. The village, you know, we can't, we, we need to stick to our job, keep our job, better job and not involve people who. Have no part of that. I know I rambled. I apologize. I take offense to that question, but you know, it was kind of expected.
Okay, so professionalism. Okay, Sean Mulvaney, Mulvaney, I'm sorry, Sean Mulvaney, it's your turn.
So I have to agree with Mary on this and, and disagree with Ben. There's no qualifications via village trustee, whether you're a civil engineer, you're good at grants, you're a fireman, whatever. You just have to have love for the village and we all got to work together. So this whole, you know, back and forth stuff, not changing anything. So, you know, we could sit here and debate all night. That's fine. All I have to say is that. Being a fireman. I'm, I'm going to give it 110% everything I do and that just right there just gave me motivation. And I'm, whoever wins, I'm looking forward to working together. With everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Sean Raymond.
Yeah, I, I currently don't have any conflicts of interest in regards to the village and its departments. I do know that the four years of being a trustee. It requires a lot of work and you support your board members quite a bit. And I'm thankful that I've had board, all the board members that I could rely on. When I go through my decision-making process on finances and budget, purchasing equipment. And any of the other policies. That affect the village departments. I do think it would be exceedingly difficult for the other board members if. Certain, you know, board members had to recuse themselves on a lot of decisions that were made. And they couldn't, couldn't really reach out to them. In an official manner. Because they had a conflict. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for answering that question. I think we're going to do two more questions. We're originally going to stop at eight, but it seems like we, we lost some time. So. This question goes to Robert Bush Jr. first. What is your plan for economic growth in the village? What types of businesses do you want to attract and how will you help the current small businesses and restaurants? You had unmute.
There's many ways of bringing people in to attract more business for businesses in the village. You can hold events, you can do many different things. The economic growth of the village. Grows when someone comes in here and they see a need for something. And then they pursue that and see, okay, do they have a. Say audience, not audience, but clientele in the village that would benefit from using their services or their goods or whatever it is that they provide. And then they make determination whether it is you make it more attractive. And you work with the Professional Business Association to make it more attractive for that person, for their business. And you come up with better plans. You work with your board to have better plans and better. Ideas. And you execute them. You don't just sit there and talk about them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary Price Bush, it's your turn.
I'm sorry, did you repeat that question?
Sure. What is your plan for economic growth in the village? What types of businesses do you want to attract and how will you help the current small businesses and restaurants?
Well, I think that the, as Bob said, the Business Professional Association does a great job with the current businesses we have. They're motivated. They try to find events. The mayor had a great idea with closing down Front Street. Bringing the restaurant seating out to accommodate the social distancing. I think our community has great ideas. We need more feedback. They had feedback in surveys. They want to see clothing stores. You know, movie theaters. All great ideas. We need to find what we can accommodate, what we can afford. We need to listen to what the village wants and we'll find a way. We'll, we'll get creative and we will find a way to raise the money to. Bring new businesses into the village.
Okay, thank you very much. Sean Mulvaney.
The biggest thing with this is the message, getting it out there to people, posting it on the webpage. Hey, go out and eat on a Friday night. Go out to the beer cart, whatever. Hate to use the business name, but we got a lot of unique shots. Back to Mary, Mary said it, Larry did a great job, you know, with the idea of closing down the streets. I think we should continue doing that. I think we should definitely communicate with the. Boston Spa Business Association, work together. The biggest thing is the message, telling people to get out there and buy local, spend local. So it's simple, you know, it's just, we, we have to fix our own businesses first. And, you know, building sidewalks might be great and all, but our main focus is our residents and our businesses. They are hurting. And they need our support more than, more than anything right now. So that, that's, that's big for me, these businesses.
Okay, thank you very much. Sean Raymond.
Well, I think for the businesses concerned. You have two types of customers. You have inside customers and outside customers in the sense that. You have customers that come from within the village. And then customers who are from other towns, whatever, that come to the village because it's attractive to come here. They love the village character. And that's what's important to me is preserving that village character. And one of the ways you preserve it is to make sure you have connectivity from residences to those businesses. I.e. sidewalks, because there's just not enough space to create tons of parking for people. So. The best way to solve that problem is sidewalks. And also a lot of the businesses use the sidewalks for al fresco dining. And, and put their wares out. So I think that it's an important feature. I, I do think that nothing happens in a vacuum and. To, it takes the board and actually the committee, the Comprehensive Planning Committee. To develop ideas and strategies that preserve village character while. Promoting smart growth.
Thank you very much. Benjamin Baskin.
Hi, I asked a small business owner why she moved here and she said it was because of the sense of place, its authenticity. And that's really what we have going for us. I'm a big smart growth advocate. I was a leader of smart growth Boston for over a decade. And in my experience, most people really value smart growth type development. So what that means is you build on your existing infrastructure. You don't do some big box development. You improve walkability and safe streets. You preserve green space. You do mixed uses of, like the village has now. You where people can shop and play and work in the same location. You develop for people of all ages and incomes. You enable aging in place. And those are the places that people want to come to. They want to visit. They want to live. We can make Boston Spa even more special. We can, for example, as people have mentioned, build on that pedestrian corridor. You know, how are we going to distinguish ourselves from, example. You know, Saratoga Springs or other places? Well, we can really become pedestrian friendly and that, that pedestrian quarter that was developed is an excellent idea. What else can we do with the stream that's cutting through the town? How much, you know, we have that resource. We don't access it enough. Can we get village-wide wifi, for example, as well as another idea? How about some nightlife? Is there any way we can get a movie theater in here or something or, or develop some more art space? So in addition to that, we need some basic infrastructure. Of course, we need to have this water and streets in good condition. That's important for business. And now I need to stop. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask one last question. It's going to be probably a nice, easy one for all of you. And Mary Price Bush, you're going to get to go first. How will you improve communication of village policies such as leaf and yard, waste pickup, sidewalk maintenance, unlicensed cars and RVs and yards to everyone in the village?
How to improve communication?
Yes.
Uh, well, I think the mayor has done a great job with the newsletter that he includes in the water bills every, every six months. That I applaud. I learn a lot about the village through those. There's also. The framed little, I don't know what they are. They're little village bulletin boards that I think we can put our notices up in. If village wifi. Becomes a thing, we can post on, you know, the village website, which is going to be improved. becomes a thing, we can post on, you know, the village website, which is going to be improved. And I'm excited about that. Word of mouth. I think there's a lot of ways that we can improve the communication throughout the village.
Okay, thank you very much. Sean Mulvaney.
Yeah, could you repeat the question, please?
Obviously. How will you help improve communication of village policies such as leaf and yard waste pickup, sidewalk maintenance, unlicensed cars and RVs and yards to everyone in the village?
Well, first off, putting up signs for the yard pickup. Certain date, it has to be picked out by bag, so on. The message, getting the message out there on the village website. Maybe going above and beyond that, Facebook. We've got a lot of, a lot of media out there. And the biggest thing is the message. And I, I mean, that, that's one thing I think is going good for the villages. It, it could improve. Anything we do could be improvement. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sean Raymond.
I agree with Sean Mulvaney. There's certainly room for improvement. We have made great strides on our webpage. And we have more plans. I know in the past two years or four years, actually, working along with Noah, we, we made great strides in improving the webpage and the creation of the newsletter that the mayor puts out. And I think that, you know, that obviously is the way forward because everyone uses the internet, at least almost everyone. And I, I think there's a lot of ways that we can communicate through that webpage with updating calendars. And also, you know, sent, we send out the water bills. At some point, I would like to see where you can pay your water bill online and just go on the webpage. So I think those kinds of communications will, will improve and have improved. But we have, we have more room to go. And I think if we keep moving forward, we'll be able to re, reach all those people.
Okay, thank you very much. Benjamin Baskin.
Improving communication. You know, I, I talked to three businesses downtown and when I asked them, how could things be improved in the village? They, each of them mentioned they would like better communication between the village government and the businesses. So if there's an event happening or some change in the street, some more struck, formal structure. Right now that it, they felt like it was more informal catches you catch can. If you happen to talk to someone, some, some kind of regular channel of communication between government and the businesses is what they requested. So that could be signing people to, for that function who then distribute messages. I would be a strong supporter of a regular email newsletter, monthly, for example, to supplement the quarterly that comes out, which is excellent. We really need to do a better job on the website. It is not kept up to date. For example, as of yesterday, the village election was not on the calendar. So we need to post recorded meetings there and lots of things need to get up on that website that are not there, upcoming events. And just information about the village. So that website could really be used better. I think the yard signs were effective if they, you know, if we put them in key places around the, the village as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Robert Bush Jr., it's your turn. You're muted.
Please repeat the question.
Sure. How will you improve communication of village policies such as leaf and yard, waste pickup, sidewalk maintenance, unlicensed cars and RVs to everyone in the village?
Well, first, we need to do a better job of utilizing social media platforms that we do, the website. The village paid money like three or four months ago and it still hasn't gotten done. There's stuff on there from 2019. It needs to be updated as previously mentioned, previously mentioned by others. Update to Facebook, maybe put a mailer out. Or maybe, I know it's a little bit outdated, but get a call list and put a call list. Do they have it for emergency services? When I, when I get one for something like that. The, the main thing is getting the message to the person. You can put signs out. You can put things in, on the bulletin boards. People talk throughout the village. Everyone knows who to talk to to spread things around this village. Let's face it. It's just better utilization of getting that word out. And the village currently isn't doing it properly. I mean, you can send out mailers to every resident and announcing it, announcing it maybe a month before it actually happens, instead of announcing it weeks. Or some, something along those lines. There's many platforms you can utilize technology to do this with.
Okay, thank you, Robert. So it's now time for our closing statements. Candidates, you have no more than one minute each. I'm sure you've all practiced. First to go on our closing statement is Mary Price Bush.
Okay. Well, again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's event. Clearly, there are issues facing the village, both COVID-related and non-COVID-related. Mayor Wilbright has put us on the right path, path financially. And the C, SCPP has given us a great plan. If we work together, we'll not only survive these trying times, but we'll come out stronger. I asked for your vote because I actually do believe in unity and diversity. And I believe we need voices from the neighborhoods, from all neighborhoods, and voices that will add to the building blocks we already possess. I'll bring to the board a fresh, fresh perspective and the willingness to listen and to work with others and to ensure we continue to prosper. And at the same time, remain a village of friends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Sean Mulvaney, it's your turn.
I didn't really type anything up, but all I have to say is, um, you know, regardless, win or lose, you know, if I, I lose this, I'm, I, I still really want to help, help out because we're all in it together. My biggest goal is to make this village better, not just for one section of the village, for everyone, for families, for the youths. I mean, they're our future and we got to make it livable for them. And we got to fix what we have in steps now. And we just kind of got to put all of our heads together and work together. And again, I'd like to thank you for putting this on. I appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sean Raymond.
I'd like to, again, as the other candidates have, thank the League Women Voters for hosting this. I think it was a great forum. It's great to hear and see, hear all the ideas that everyone has. Because that's what, that's what a, a forum should be, is an exchange of ideas. I just would like to say that, you know, four years ago, Noah and Shaw, Shaw and I were elected. And it became apparent to us early on, the village, the finances were in disarray. Several budget years had been closed out. Had not been closed out by the comptroller. So, you know, we, we tried to make that public. We went out. And unfortunately, as much of our efforts, it was, it was thwarted by the previous administration. And then when our ideas could actually blossom is when there was a changing of the guard. And Mayor Wilbright and the other two trust, I'm sorry, can I red card?
No, that's not part of the rules. You could only use a red card to ask, answer questions. Benjamin Baskin, your turn.
I'm running because, well, first of all, thanks again, League Women Voters and the other candidates. I know this is stressful for all of us, this format. We're not used to it. So, and I appreciate all of you volunteering to, to campaign because it's not easy. You know, I'm running because I love our village. I'm worried about it. This is a critical time for the future direction of Ball Spa. We're undertaking a comprehensive plan followed by zoning, rezoning. The rezoning is a big deal. It will affect how we live on a daily basis, how the village develops over time. We can't afford to have trustees who don't have the relevant experience and skills to be effective and who have clear conflicts of interest coming into the election. And I'm concerned because they have the village's biggest developer closely associated with them, basically managing.
Benjamin Baskin, we're not going to attack other.
Oh, I can't say that. Okay, sorry. So, so in, in conclusion, I just want to say that Sean and I, we have the experience, the skills and integrity to be effective trustees, as Mr. Raymond has already shown during his four years on the board.
Thank you very much. Robert Bush Jr., you're, you get the last word.
Thank you. And again, I want to apologize for having to run out like that. Again, it was a fire call. I'm a volunteer firefighter. That's what I do. And I have some written up, but I didn't want to get a chance to talk them out to anyone, except for the last two questions. And it is what it is. My experience, I lived here my whole life. I talked to all the residents. I walked down the street. I hear what the residents want. I hear what the residents are looking for. I, we went, I hear what the business is looking for. I shop down there. I eat down there in the village. It's not like I don't have experience. And my experience that I take professionally does go coincide with what we do in the village as far as budgets, as far as getting talking to people as far as problem solving. That's my job. I problem solve for a living. I asked for your vote on March 16th for a truly non-person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all so much. You really did a nice job. And it was difficult in this format. And then our fire call was something we've never experienced before, but I think we tried to make it work. Everyone, audience, please remember to vote. The village election is March 16th. And you can vote at the Eagle Mat Lee and Union Fire Stations. Absentee ballot applications are available in the village clerk's office, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. And applications must be returned before Tuesday, March 9. Thank you, candidates, for attending this event and helping to educate the voters and letting them know who you are, what you stand for. And for everybody who's watching, thank you for taking an effort to get yourself educated and find out who wants to be your trustee. Okay, good night, everyone, and good luck to all the candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Robert.
Yes.
Thanks.